Okay, we're gonna need an amended agenda tonight. There is two items added to the personnel. One of which is, um, the Personnel Committee has recommended a building official to be hired and, uh, the other one is a temporary Finance Director, part-time training. Uh, those two items, so if we can have a motion on, on that.
I'll make the motion to accept the agenda change.
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, second by Jim, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, next item is a consent agenda. We have the minutes of the city, the council meeting on February twentieth. The HRA on February fourteenth, Telcom on February twenty-sixth. Then we have the regular bills and then several license items. Uh, exempt gambling permit for Bark on April sixteenth. Amplified permit Wyndham Lions Club June seventh. Authorization of, to dispense intoxicating liquor Wyndham Lions Club June seventh. Temporary liquor license Wyndham's Lions Club June seventh and Wyndham Chamber April seventeenth.
I'd make the motion to approve that consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Marv, second by Jim, all in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay, we have any department heads tonight? Okay. No department heads. Item three is SEH has requested for additional services. You wanna cover that, Steve?
Yep, uh, thank you. So in your packet, there is a letter from SEH. Uh, they were the consultants we hired to help us with our Perkins Creek floodplain modeling work. Uh, that was a joint effort with the Minnesota DNR and, uh, and the, uh, federal government. So the, uh, work, uh, was mostly done back in twenty-twenty-two into early twenty-three. Uh, we're kinda getting close to the finish line on that. Um, the letter in the packet, so when the work was done on this last flood remodeling, it was discovered by the, um, DNR and the feds that when the city and county did the Fourth Avenue Reconstruction Project, I believe it was in two thousand and nine timeframe. Um, the city redid the street, the county redid the bridge. Uh, different contractors and different responsibilities. Um, however, the engineering work for that bridge did not get completed per DNR specs. Uh, there's some modeling and some forms that were not completed at that time. And as close as we can tell, you know, the county probably said, well, it's a city project. We're just putting in the bridge, so the city did the engineering and work. And we said, hey, we're doing the street, we're not doing the bridge, so the county's doing the work. Well, it got missed. And so when they did this modeling effort, that, that error was discovered. So the DNR asked that, uh, basically the whole thing gets done in present day. Uh, that would have been considerable cost. Uh, the estimate was over eighteen thousand dollars to do that and get that completed. Um, however, because we had already done a lot of the modeling for the Perkins Creek stuff with this floodplain effort we were doing, they let us use that information and to move that forward and then fill out the forms and the paperwork that they wanted uh, for the LOMAR, which is the Letter of Map Provision. And then there's the MinDOT's MT2 forms that all need to be completed. Uh, so rather than go through that process and, uh, incur those additional costs and possibility of fines for not doing it, uh, the decision was made to use the information we had, push forward with getting that completed and filling out those DNR forms. Uh, SEH did that for us. Um, the additional, um, work, they asked, or they had, uh, have now completed it. Um, the Fourth Street crossing, the additional modeling effort needed to be done was thirty-five hundred and filling out the MT2 forms, which the NR required, was another fifteen hundred. So they're asking for the city to pay an additional fifteen hundred, or sorry, five thousand dollars over the contracted amount that we had agreed to for that floodplain modeling. Um, just given the oversight over a decade ago about it and we thought this was obviously the most cost-effective thing to do is to do this. Where I intend to, if you approve it, where we hopefully can, um, put it within our existing budget, uh, we'll have a little bit of a gap on our full-time position in the planning and zoning office. And so hopefully there'll be, there will be a little bit of savings there. So when we, um, have some of that savings, we'll just use a little bit of those savings and put into the consultant budget in that department. And end of the year, probably be close to a wash. But, uh, we are asking for your approval to put an additional five thousand dollars towards this floodplain, uh, study for Perkins Creek and the related modeling.
Can we have a motion on?
Whose, whose responsibility originally was it, Steve?
Then that's a discussion we were kinda having is, you know, again, you know, our engineer was engineering the streets, the county did the bridge. And I think, you know, back, you know, at that time, I think Ron Gregg was county engineer and we had, uh, either Dennis Johnson, I think Dennis Johnson was still on his own, our engineer at that time. So as close as we can tell, it was just, they thought we were doing it, we thought they were doing it, and it just missed.
There's no way we could split the cost with them?
Well, that could be a conversation we, we have with them. Um, there will be another county request coming on that lot. So, uh, everything is up for discussion, but I can certainly do that if that's the wishes of the council.
That's what I'd like to see done.
And would that satisfy all entities though, if we take care of that then?
Well, we, we need to get, you know, this taken care of with SEH and the work's been done. It's been submitted to FEMA, but DNR's still kinda, you know, um, wanting those MT2 forms and everything. And so, um, it is work that we've, you know, requested SEH to do and complete. So we need to pay them one way or the other, whether we wanna forward it, fund it, and then try to get half out of the county, or you wanna put this on hold while we have that discussion with the county. That's up to you guys.
Do we have the timeline?
Uh, SEH has waited for a while on this already. Um, so, you know, if it's two weeks, probably not a big deal. If it's gonna be a year, yeah, it's probably gonna be too long. But yeah, you probably have a little time if you wanna do that.
I agree, if, if we have a little bit of time, we should at least approach the idea and see if, if they'll be willing to split the cost a little bit. Because it wasn't just ours and it wasn't just them. I think they got two people pointing fingers at each other and wouldn't hurt to ask, I guess. All they could say is no. So do we make a motion towards that then, or?
If you wanna just ta-table it and make that as a formal request that we ask the county to cover half of the bill, that would be great. Then I can say that that was the council's position.
I'll make a motion to table that for right now and then ask county if they'll be willing to split that.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, uh, Scott, uh, wasn't with us tonight, but, uh, so I can cover it. Uh, so Corey Hillshym, our Assistant Police Chief, uh, came in and dropped his letter of resignation off. Corey is taking a different job outside the law enforcement profession. Um, it's very unfortunate, obviously, that we have to lose a police officer and, uh, certainly someone in leadership that's been a very good, uh, officer here in the city of Wyndham for fifteen years as a police officer and, um, seven years as Assistant Chief. But we certainly wish, uh, Mr. Hillshym all the best in his next endeavor. And, um, personnel did have a little discussion about this this evening and we'll be looking at, you know, um, what our options are for refilling or backfilling that position, probably in the near future.
Does, uh, does Scott have a recommendation for an assistant?
Not, not at this time, we'll have that discussion personnel shortly.
So I'll make a motion to accept his resignation letter?
And I would second.
Motion by Scott, second by Marv, uh, all in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, same sign. Okay, the next item is a building official. I think Marv is gonna talk on this.
Yeah, yesterday morning, we held a Personnel Committee meeting and we interviewed three candidates for the building official position. All three candidates brought somewhat different skill sets and qualifications, but all were viable candidates. And in the end, the Personnel Committee is recommending the hiring of Todd Seiverson based on his many years of experience, experience in the construction trade and as a site superintendent supervisor on many projects over the years. So I would make the motion to approve the hiring of Todd Seiverson based on the terms of employment in the memo on your, on the table that you have.
I'll second.
Motion by Marv, second by Jim, all in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, same sign.
Just a quick question, would Andy be willing to help train?
Yeah, Andy is still on board, you know, as our last meeting, we had that agreement with him to, you know, help train into the new person when we got them. This is a little quicker than we anticipated, which is great, you know? But yeah, I'm sure Andy would be willing to help them out.
Okay, the, the next item under the Personnel Committee, uh, is a temp- temp- temporary Finance Director, Training Person.
Okay, uh, so this evening at Personnel Committee before the council meeting this evening, we're still working through our, uh, new Finance Director hire, Donna Torkelson. As you know, we've got Abido Solutions, uh, that we had hired to help us, you know, get some of the work done in the, in the transition and also help do some training. Donna did reach out to Cheryl Alford, who is our former, um, Finance Director that retired. And Cheryl initially hadn't had, um, consideration for doing this, but just kinda seeing where we're at and they, you know, know each other and that kind of thing. She knows Donna is really, you know, gonna dive in and do it. And so Cheryl has said that she would come back and help, um, do some training of our new Finance Director. So the discussion with Personnel Committee this evening was to, um, hire Cheryl back as a part-time Finance Director with the responsibility of training and transitioning our new Finance Director. Cheryl's rate would be equivalent to what she was being paid, um, when she retired, which was, um, step eleven of her pay grade. The other discussion with Personnel and the recommendation, I believe, was to, um, terminate our contract with Abido. Um, so if we have Cheryl on site, that was a lot more, um, training and a lot more, um, specific to what the job is and, and getting those things accomplished. So we felt that was a very good trade, um, to bring Cheryl on board. And so, um, that is their request this evening. There was a letter of agreement handed out, it's very similar to the one that we did, uh, last council meeting with, um, Mr. Spielman to keep him on to help transition and train. Um, so this is pretty much the same basis. So, and I believe that was a announced recommendation by Personnel to, uh, hire Cheryl part-time and then, uh, we'll terminate our contract with Abdo. Uh, the agreement with Cheryl would run just under six months because that's as long as you can go, uh, without having to get into the para and all the other things that we would need to do there. So there is a definite end date on it.
I'll make a motion to accept a agreement of the Personnel Committee on hiring and training and the letting go of Abdo.
I would second.
Motion by Scott, second by Jenny, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose, same sign.
I think I can speak for everybody involved in finance that, uh, they're thoroughly grateful for Cheryl to be willing to, to come back and help train.
Does that motion include the termination?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, item six, Contractor Payments and Change Orders. Uh, the first item is the Truck Garage, Wilcon Construction Service Payment of twenty-two thousand forty-five dollars. Oh, let's back up one, I missed item five. Item five is, uh, additional mayor's appointment. And I believe that was, uh,
It's, it's Joanne Ray from Park and Rec.
Joanne Ray from Park and Rec is what the mayor has asked for. We have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to accept the mayor's appointment for Joanne Ray to come to Park and Rec.
I would second.
Motion by Scott, second by Jenny, all in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, same sign. Now we'll go back to the contractor bills and the Truck, Truck Garage, Wilcon Construction. Twenty-two thousand forty-five dollars and ninety-four cents. Would you like to say something on that?
Sure. So basically, um, this is just punch list items. Um, we're getting really close, so we're probably expecting final payment next, next, uh, next month. So, um, it's, we're using it, it's great, and, yeah.
I would make the motion to approve payment number nine to Wilcon Construction.
I'll second.
Motion by Marv, second by Jenny, all in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, same sign. Okay, the next, next item is the Generator Plant Construction, Wilcon Construction for a hundred and forty thousand thirty dollars.
Yeah, so, um, as you've, if you've driven by, you can see, you can see the progress now. So all the, all the structural steel's up, I got all the, the roof sheeting on today. So, um, expecting to put sidewalls and roof on, the roof material on next week. So it should be weather tight by the end of March here and ready, ready to take the generators, which are sitting in Shakopee, waiting. So, um, we'll get a date and we'll probably let the paper know and some other people know when they roll into town. So it should be pretty, pretty cool thing to see. They're fifty-six thousand pounds, so they're gonna roll them in, in through a ten-foot door, so. Yeah.
Is that gonna take any street shutting down or anything like that, where we need to block some roadies for you guys then, or?
Yeah, well, I'm sure we'll have to shut the road down for a few hours in the day until they lift it off the truck and slide it off the road. Similar to what we've had to do a couple times with some of the steel deliveries, but. It's a very, that's a very busy road, that's what, every single contractor says that, so.
Speaking of which, what do we plan on doing with that road after we're done? It's just beat up bad.
We'll, we'll patch our little section that we, uh, we tore out for the sewer, but, um.
It is, it is on the street committee's list, it's just, uh, you know, um, matter of finding the money to pay for reconstruction of that street. Right now, you know, we've got that grant pending for the recon of Ten, of Tenth Street. So, you know, we'll find out on that one this spring, so. But, you know, the First Avenue, we kinda thought, well, we'd wait for sure until the Truck Garage is done and the, you know, plant is done, so the gen plant's done, so we don't have that happening at the same time. But it's, it's, it's on their priority list, it's just a matter of funding.
I'll make a motion to accept a Generator Plant, Wilcon Construction, payment of a hundred and forty thousand thirty.
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, second by Jenny, all in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, same sign. Okay, our next item would be Wilcon Construction Change Order Number Four. It's, uh, void a two-inch water line in lieu of one inch, or, for five hundred and thirty dollars.
Yeah, so part of the, the next change order, we were able to eliminate this previously approved change order to upsize the one-inch line to a two-inch line. This line goes from the Truck Garage into the Gen Plant. That, cause that, we would change that over to our main service, water service line coming in off of, off of First there, so. But we were able to eliminate it with some of the work we did with the next change order, so.
I'd make the motion to approve, uh, Change Order Number Four.
I'll second.
Motion by Marv, second by Jenny, all in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay, the next item is for Wilcon Construction also, Change Order Number Five. Power Wash Station, nine hundred and fifteen dollars.
So this one came up a little after the fact. Um, due to plumbing code, um, we have a pressure washer that's, uh, always directly connected to the water, to the water line. So being that it's directly connected and always connected up, there has to be an RPZ on that line serving that, um, pressure washer. So it, uh, prevents any soap or things that you use through the pressure washer to go back into the city's water supply, so.
Question, didn't we know about this before though, or?
Um, well, we were under the impression that beans, it was kinda hooked up with a garden hose that we wouldn't have, we, you know, we could just consider it, well, we disconnected, but that wasn't, that wasn't the case, so. They, they kinda deemed it that we probably weren't gonna disconnect it all the time, so. What? Yeah, it was a code issue, so.
Is there any way that Ryan could get a siphon brake to put in, in between the lines there so that, that wouldn't happen? That's basically what he's saying here is, that is what it's for. And I know, when I was working with it, they have to be inspected every year or sooner and parts will be changed in them and they're pretty spendy. And that's why I was wondering if Ryan could somehow figure something out.
So if it, if it was a, of a fill kinda thing, we can have a siphon brake, but beans, it's out, it's a pressurized line. I don't, I don't think we can get by with anything other than putting it in. We, we tried to just get by with the little plunger, you know, that you screw on, on the end of your garden hose, kinda at the campground, but apparently that wasn't, that wasn't good enough on this one.
So I would make the motion to approve Change Order Number Five for the Power Wash Station.
I'll second it.
Oppose, same sign.
I'll make the motion to exi- make the payment of number four, a hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-eight, a hundred and fourteen and forty-eight cents, eighty-four cents.
I would second that.
Motion by Marv, second by Jenny, all in favor say aye.
Scott wasn't, Scott.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Scott and Jenny. All in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, same sign.
John Nelson, Liquor Store Manager. Uh, so included in your packet is a letter from TSP, the architect for the project, recommending an extension of ten additional days to the contract. Um, also included in there is two different schedules. Um, there is the original schedule, um, for the May first completion. Um, and then the second schedule is how the schedule will be laid out if the project is extended. Um, one of the biggest, um, things that we've come up with is, uh, when we do our shutdown for the epoxy flooring, um, on the original schedule, the plan was to shut down from Monday, April fifteenth to Friday, April nineteenth. During that time, um, we have to have the entire floor cleaned off, including all the existing shelving, displays, products, um, so that they can come in, do their final prep work, and then four layers of epoxy on the floor. So in discussion, um, um, and then after the, um, it's completed, then we have to bring everything back onto the floor and set the computers back up, uh, to be ready for sale. Um, so when you take that into factor, um, one, one weekend, we're pretty much emptying out the store. Whereas, and then we're coming back the next weekend and doing the final, um, putting everything back so that we can be operational. And it, it could affect closed, being closed two weekends in a row. Close in early Saturday to make sure Sunday we're ready. Um, and then as long as it takes to get everything back in so that we can be up and running. So changing the schedule, um, we changed this, um, they were willing to come in and do it over a weekend. Um, so we bumped it back, um, in which we'll, um, begin the flooring on April eighteenth, which is a Thursday. Um, so that'll give us the middle of the week and some extra time beforehand to get everything cleaned off, um, the remaining shelves and displays. And then we can come in, hopefully that Tuesday night of the twenty-third, and finish putting stuff back in. And then our goal is to have, um, some vendors on site on Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, and begin setting up the new shelving. begin setting up the new shelving. So hopefully we can be open that Wednesday, if not, we'll definitely be open by that Thursday. So it really only affects one weekend to shut down during that time. It also coincides with the annual M M B A Annual Conference up in Alexandria that I usually attend. Whereas with the previous schedule, would that initial store reset up, I would be gone for that. So this ties it together with pretty much that plan of that conference, and then if there is any hiccups during that time with setting things back up, should be easy to set up because I will be there to handle that, so. As you can see by the schedule on the screen there, most of the stuff does wrap up still by May 1st, including the seating and all that. It just extends it a little bit in case there's some final punch list items over those next 10 days or so.
The epoxy flooring, you're not rushing that at all, right?
No.
No.
It is, they do one layer, and right about 24 hours later, they have to do the second layer, 24 hours later, they do the, another layer, and then they do the sealer over top. So it's, it's a period of time. Some of the comments is potentially with the work that Soussner's doing with the removal of the existing carpet, and we're finding lots and lots of glue underneath, that it should save them half a day to a day on the prep work for the flooring, which should hopefully help get that done a little sooner as well, so.
I would make a motion to approve the schedule extension request by T S P.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jenny, second by Scott. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign.
Just a few comments on the current status of construction. It's kind of a mess around there. We are working on, well, we're probably 85% done. That entire north and east wall, which had all of our liquor bottles on it, we have about 85% of it cleared off. So if you're looking for a certain product or a certain size, what we encourage you to do is use our website, riverbendliquor.com, place an order online. That gives us a few hours to go into the warehouse and find that bottle, because everything's boxed up in different boxes, different locations, and so if you come in the store looking for a specific product, chances are staff is gonna have to go to the warehouse and find that bottle. So if you're in a hurry, I would recommend just ordering ahead. It'll just make it easier on yourself, we'll have it ready. You walk in, you sign a piece of paper, and you're out the door, it's paid for over our website via credit cards, and it'll make it a lot easier and less convenient, or more convenient on your end, instead of waiting around and, you know, you walk in, there might be five other people waiting for a bottle, which can take a little bit to find right now, so.
Next item is new business, if we have any, any new business? Okay, old business, any old business? Council comments. Jim, you have any comments?
No.
Marv?
I just hate to see Corey go, but...
Right.
I guess, good for him.
Yeah. Jenny, you have anything?
Yeah, I was just gonna add to that Officer Hillshym has just been, you know, prominent officer in our community for a long time, and I think done a really good job in the city of Wyndham, and I think a lot of people respect him and just thank him for his service to the city of Wyndham. And then the other thing is, you know, with the liquor store remodel, you know, hopefully people continue to purchase from the liquor store, those money all get funneled back into the city of Wyndham, so even though it's going through some construction and changes, make sure you're still shopping local. And the riverbendliquor.com website is there and ready to use, very convenient, and when you sign up and register with it, you get emailed some coupons and specials, so if you want to get in on that, and then just be patient, because when it's all said and done, it's going to be beautiful and it's going to be fun to shop in, and you'll be able to see your product and get around much easier.
Scott, you have anything?
Excuse me, I just want to add to the, of our officer resigning, and it's, it's not a bad thing, it's a good thing for him, and he wants to move on to a different stuff, and, and our department heads all pull together and they all work together great around here, so just, just accept that for what it is, and our other people that are coming back to help us out in our pinch of time, I want to say thank you a lot, because that helps out a lot, and it's gonna save the city a lot of money too. So be just, just be grateful for the people we have working for us, and thank you, guys.
Okay, Steve, you have anything?
Just again, wish Officer Hillshym, wish Corey all the best in his new endeavors, and thank you to everybody who went out and voted today, it was presidential primary in Minnesota, so hopefully got out and voted, and thank you very much.